All right, good evening. City of Clear Lake Shore, City Council, ready our meeting February twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three at six thirty-one. Call the meeting in order. We do have full council here in Quorum. Item number two is pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and Texas flag. All right, item number three is a proclamation. This is for the Clear Lake Shore Sixtieth Anniversary Committee. Whereas the City of Clear Lake Shores was incorporated over sixty years ago on December thirteenth, nineteen sixty-two, and whereas sixty years later, a committee was formed, the volunteers of the City of Clear Lake Shores residents, and whereas the volunteer hours of the Sixtieth Anniversary Committee has demonstrated a strong and enduring commitment to present our community with an outstanding memorial of the creation of our city, and whereas the City of Clear Lake Shores is blessed with the individuals who selfishly dedicated their time and energy to provide our community with a variety of events to honor our city, and whereas these events consist of the Sixtieth Anniversary picnic at Jarboe Park and the gala hosted at South Shore Harbor Resort with behind-the-scenes designing and fundraising with several memorabilia items and presenting many artifacts of the history of Clear Lake Shores, and whereas the committee consists of residents Marlena Hoggett, Teresa Otten, Charlotte Ritterhaus, Dora Sanders, Cindy Sawyer, Georgia at South, and Teresa Viola and Linda Ware. And now therefore, I, Kurt Otten, Mayor of Clear Lake Shores, Texas, do hereby proclaim February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, as Clear Lake Shores Sixtieth Anniversary Committee Recognition Day. And they're all here. As y'all come up, we'll get a proclamation for you. Thank y'all again for all y'all's hard work and dedication. We appreciate that. All right, item number four, reports from council. Councilman Steve Wordes.
I have nothing to report this time.
Thank you, Mr. Wordes. Councilman Rick Fisher.
For Parks and Pool, just a couple of quick things. They had a meeting last week. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend, but just some of the highlights on it. They had a couple of park issues they were talking about. One of the big things was getting a couple more bids for the access system for the pool using a fob reader or a card reader versus just punching in a code. They've got one bid. They're looking for a couple more, and then it sounds like we're going to do another special meeting at some point next week, hopefully to be able to go over all those bids, pick one that we like, and hopefully be able to bring it toward, to the city and see what we can get going on that, hopefully before this pool season starts up in May, try and get that done by then. And then it's another quick update on the memorial bench for Craig Ward. We got the proof back. Council has got one. I've got one up on the table up there if anybody wants to take a look at it. Reneale Burnup provided us with the picture and the wording that she wanted on that. I sent that back to her, and she looked at it, just double-checked spelling and dates. She said it was all good. She loved the picture. So that's been sent back to the company, and now they're in the process of making the bench, and hopefully it'll be here in the next couple of weeks. Also talked with Rob Shear today about going and getting a spot and putting it up in the park itself. But we're going to wait till it comes in just to see the exact dimensions and how exactly we want to get it mounted in there so it doesn't walk or float away, but we'll keep you updated on it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fisher. Councilman Monica LeDang.
Thanks for spearheading that, Rick. It's really nice. I like it. I went to the Galveston County Health District Animal Services Quarterly Arc Meeting this past week. Main updates, well, we had one lost pet and one recovered pet or returned-to-owner pet. That was it for the quarter, and the main thing that really affects us is we formed a committee to look at, currently, our dollar amount that we pay per year is based on our population. Us and Bay Vista both are kind of in the same boat of we pay nine thousand dollars-ish a year, but as you can see, we rarely use the services. So they formed a committee to look at the possibility of allocating it more towards historical data of how often the services are used. So that being said, hopefully for two thousand and twenty-four, our rate will be reduced.
All right, thank you, Ms. LeDang. Councilwoman Anna Scanlon.
I was over at the WCID twelve water tower today on city-related business, but the project is ongoing. They've got sandblasting material on site, so I don't know what they're waiting on, but hopefully that gets going, and we have a nice new painted water tower soon.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Mayor Pro Tem Randy Cronister.
I'm gonna let Thomas talk about roads and drainage since he's here to give a report, but they started working on the road back behind Home Depot, clearing it out and getting ready to pour that concrete and do that work that you were talking about, so that's already moving forward and looking good. They should be done pretty soon. They were moving pretty quick. And I was gonna thank all these ladies that got their goodies and left, but the Gumbo Cook-Off was a hit. To get food and drinks was a mile long. There was a good long wait, so Okies did really well. There was a lot of you guys were there. It was nice to see everybody, and it was a great event. We had a good time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cronister, and I don't have anything else to report. Everything was covered. Next is item five, staff reports. Police Department interim chief David Donaldson.
Mayor, council, I'd like to compliment you all on getting us the top-line equipment, the watch guard. Our deployment date was the thirteenth of the fifteenth. It fell on target. We had a little bit of issues, but I couldn't have done it without the mayor's help. I don't know anything about bandwidth or, I was out of my element. So I want to thank you, Mayor, for helping me out with that. And Rick Birchfield, he was a big help in this project as well. So we have the body cams up and running. They're working flawlessly. The clarity is second to none. I mean, it's top-notch. We have a little snafu with the mounting brackets for our in-car cameras. They sent us Ford truck mounting brackets, and we have explorers. They didn't send any Chevrolet Tahoe brackets neither. So we're waiting on that. Everything is programmed, so once we get that, they'll install it, and then we'll be up and running. And training went very well with the officers as well. So thank you all very much.
Sounds good, and thanks. And what about the upload speed in City Hall? Is that anything yet? Don't know yet. Okay. Just let us know because we have other levers we can pull to up that speed too. All right, thanks.
Mayor, what they did, what the installer suggested, we have one camera that's mounted in the car. The antenna's actually in the hatchback right now, so they had to program one to be sure everything was up and running. So driving around the island, we have two bars of service. It could be because the antenna's in the cargo area, but it was something that we need to check out before the thirty-day trial is over, you know, where we might have to go to Verizon or make some other decision. But we'll be watching it once we get the equipment installed appropriately.
Can the antenna be mounted outside the car?
Yes, sir. It will be. Right now, it's just laying in the back.
Okay. Well, let Brad know or whatever. Just make sure we stay on top of that, please. Thanks. All right, next is our new city administrator, Mr. Brad Gowdy. Welcome.
Well, good evening, everybody. I tell you, it's quite an honor to finally be sitting up here. Being the first day, I want to thank Christie. She really helped me get settled in today and off to a great start. Being the first day, I didn't have a whole lot to provide updates, but I did want to let you know what's kind of landed on my radar. This is some stuff that's been well in motion prior to my arrival, but I'm just kind of getting absorbed in and taking part of it and hopefully be able to show you some progress. The two items that are going to be on the list tonight that are in the green highlight are items that after they got on the list, I discovered that they were completed. Just out of respect for your time, I'm going to run through this fairly quickly. As we mentioned, the police chief recruit, and let me say that nothing on this list is on any specific order of priorities, just how it landed on there, so don't go by that order. Communication specialists, look forward to working with Teresa on identifying a good candidate for that position. As we discussed earlier tonight, the waterfront usage lease, the FEMA Cav action. I'm looking forward to getting a hold of that report and getting in and providing you with some updates on where we're at on that project. RFP, RFQ, this is referencing more the emergency management component, how we're set up for this next storm season that comes in, make sure we're prepared, and is there anything that we need to be pursuing? Feel much better after visiting with the mayor today that there's a lot of my concerns that we do have contracts already in place, so I'm just gonna make sure that they're current, ready to go. You'll probably see later the anniversary banners. This first started off on the destination of the Sixtieth Anniversary banners, and it's kind of expanded in some opportunities for banners, but I'm not going to steal anybody's thunder for that. Code compliance, working with Angie, what we want to do is look at our code and compliance code enforcement program, get the proper training and proper structure in so we can be responsive and have equal enforcement throughout the city on all options. Councilman had mentioned earlier the facility access for the pool, the SIM cards for the MBTs and PD that has been completed per chief, golf cart replacements, it's the golf cart that was totaled out, looking to get a replacement for it. Public works truck is having some significant mechanical issues right now. It's gone over to the dealership, and we're looking right now about sixty-one hundred dollars for repairs for a vehicle that's two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. Where I have decided to closely evaluate this option and figure, is that the best for us? Put that much money into a vehicle that's that old? Or is it best just to go ahead and look at retirement and come back to council with an option of a replacement? So we're going to figure out what's the most feasible, appropriate way to do that. Try and get you an update and see where we're at as far as moving forward on the shale bottom boating access. Mr. Pons and his palm tree program, strategic plan and implementation. This last year, you guys went through the strategic plan. What I'm hoping to do is visit with council. Number one, do you agree with the plan, and do we take and stay on track with the implementation plan? I see that as being a good roadmap for where we go in the future, but I've got to know that that's the desire of the council, so we're looking to get some updates on that. Three-eighty agreement that was processed, auto bridge pedestrian. There are some federal funds that are coming up for a project that we're going to be looking into, possibly the replacement of the auto bridge with a pedestrian component on May coming in. Right now, it's just kind of an exploratory option, as long, in addition to the other alternative programs we're looking at. And then finally, on the body shop demolition, on how we're going to move forward with that and on our best options there. And there's really probably a lot more out there that I don't have on the list yet, but we'll get you updated.
I have a quick question, and Kurt may have to answer it if you don't know already, but have we closed on it? Is that a done deal and we're moving forward?
Yes, we're completely closed.
Okay. Is there any timeline on the demolition?
So Johnny was getting, EDC was getting quotes, and then there's a couple of options out there to think about. We can have Odie and Jorge tear it down with the backhoe that we have, but that's up to Brad, and bring in a container for that, or two, or three, is we have the residents do a auto shop raising where we tear it down.
The only concerns is more from a liability whether our own staff are, you know, do we have asbestos on the property? Do we have the right tools so we can keep everybody safe and do the project? So we're going to figure out the most efficient, cost-effective, safe way to do this.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, yeah, so EDC is looking at the cost on that.
So we still need, like, even if we approve the concrete or whatever, they still need to move the electrical and do that.
So that's already, I believe it's already done. They had a work order to remove the power off the building.
No, I mean, the electrical that feeds the lighting in the parking lot that's gonna be in the middle of the parking lot.
So he's working with, I don't want to speak on behalf of EDC, but Johnny Boltinghouse is working with Bay, Galveston Bay Brewing to move that service, move that connection and the EDC to cut and run the power over to their power feeds and then remove the whole stand and staircase. All right, thanks, Brad. Item number six is committee reports, parks and pool. All right, roads and drainage. Let's see if we can get that microphone on for you.
It was blinking. We are here, yep.
Yep, there you go.
All right, we didn't have a meeting in roads and drainage last month because we were waiting for Brad to join us. We've made, well, a whole stack of RFPs to go out for doing the roadworks that are coming up, which is drainage on both sides of Narcissus, the whole length, and resurfacing of the road. Well, that's actually a full-depth proclamation where they're going to grind it down and redo it. Then we have several also for doing Clear Lake Road, the approaches to the bridge, including the pedestrian bridge, and eventually the whole of Clear Lake Road, at least up until Ivy, to make that concrete. But all this is waiting for you to take ownership of. I might as well do EDC while I'm first here, even though it's jumping the order. A few things, the palm trees being approved. We have engaged with Parks Committee. They're gonna help us look at the placement, make sure everything is proper, taking into consideration not to put anything in the right of ways that we get text to deal with. Probably that's going to happen in March. That's the plan, to get it in before hurricane season. The concert series been announced on the city website. And then we have an issue to talk to Brad about, about maybe EDC can help with some of the funding for the Parks Committee. We just need to go over what we can and cannot do. We can talk a little bit about that also when we meet on Thursday.
Thanks, Tom. All right, the zoning board of adjustments, Mr. Machowski.
Mayor and council, no actions to report for either zoning board of adjustments or the planning and zoning committee. Thank you.
Thank you. And waterfront compliance? No report. Item seven, civic club activities report, Ms. Linda Ware.
Yeah. Mayor and council, as you said, the Gumbo Cook-Off, the Mardi Gras events that we did last Saturday were great. We had a great turnout at the Mardi Gras parade. We had at least twenty-five floats out there, or golf cart floats, and then we sold over three hundred wristbands for Okies, so if you had a hard time moving around there, you saw it, and that's in spite of the cold weather. Things that we have coming up, island cleanup, thanks to Dora Sanders on March twenty-fifth. We have a membership mingle at our civic club meeting next Thursday night. We invite all of y'all to come out for that. Easter services, things like that. We're bringing back the kids' fishing tournament in June. So we'll be looking to folks, it's finally coming back after COVID, so we're all looking forward to doing that. And the last thing, Civic Club is offering to pay for the new flags, and in exchange, we request the Sixtieth Anniversary flags be donated to the Civic Club. We have citizens interested in purchasing those, so that's it for the Civic Club.
Thank you, Linda, and look forward to that kid fishing again. Be great. All right, item eight, EDC? Oh, you did it all? Okay. You jumped. Thank you. All right, item nine, public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business may speak to the city council if the topic of discussion is related to an item on the agenda. The comments may be made now or at the time of the agenda items discussed. If the topic of discussion is not related to an item on the agenda, the city council cannot deliberate or take any action at this time. Comments from the public should be limited to a maximum of three minutes per individual. Yes?
Linda Machowski, ten nineteen North Shore Drive. Socialism is the taking of private property. My home was unattacked for ten years. One day, I got a city letter from a land surveyor who happened to be a mayor, Ted Guthrie. He said I built an unlawful structure. This letter followed to district court and FEMA Region Six to try to justify harm and removal of my home's lower level for an official's view of the lake. There are approximately sixty-five non-permitted lower levels in Clear Lake Shores. I'm the one that has all permits. Recently, building official Kevin Harold told me to come to city council to get this libel corrected. I have all legal permits and allowed to keep all amenities by FEMA Region Six, two inspections. I have been met with denied freedom of speech by Olson and Olson. I have not come after anyone. I have defended my home and property from dishonest men and women who tried to take it from me. Corrupt city officials have pulled a scam that many residents could not defend themselves from, causing huge losses. Rico, it was called, after seeing the mafia-styled extortion allowed and covered up by Olson and Olson. I have filed four lawsuits to protect my properties. It is now confirmed, Mayor Otten has filed a fraudulent report about elevations to FEMA Region Six. My home is under-reported two and a half feet. Current fraud has been reported to federal officials. I have attended council meetings for years trying to get fraud corrected to no avail. False city letters and threats have not been corrected. My home has been attacked again with fraudulent statements and reports. I will not sit by idly and let some official bureaucrat use this against me in the future as Guthrie's false statement was used to deceive district court and FEMA Region Six. My trust in local government at this point, with Olson and Olson at the helm, is zero. They should be fired and sued for what they have done to innocent residents in Clear Lake Shores. I don't believe in socialism, but in hard work and good choices to achieve the American dream, which I accomplished. I'm a thirty-four-year resident. My two sons and two grandchildren attend Stewart Elementary. I love Clear Lake Shores with all my heart, and I will not move. Bullies, men and women, too full of hate to correct fraud against me and my home. I have spent a hard dollars of over a hundred and fifty thousand to protect my home and properties from official fraud. Plunder and financial rape in Clear Lake Shores using false elevations must stop now. I will continue to ask for exoneration and compensation for the harm that has happened to me as a result of Clear Lake Shores fraud committing officials using false elevation certificates to this day. It is fraud, it is current, and it is ongoing. I did not cheat the city or FEMA, as did many who have in Clear Lake Shores. Mayor Ted Guthrie, a land surveyor who is licensed, can explain why my home was attacked after ten years existing peacefully.
Ms. Machowski, your three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have other comments?
Remi LaDay, three twenty-four, Blue Point. I'm disappointed to see so many empty seats here tonight. I guess when it's not a juicy topic, people don't want to come to hear really what's going on with the city. They choose to come when it's messier to see what's going on. I'm here tonight to ask city council, mayor, that with the elections coming up, there's going to be a new faces in city council, new mayor. I think a lot of people on this island don't understand how this council works. So perhaps y'all should put together some kind of workshop on a Saturday, town hall meeting, questions and answers so people can really understand what your roles are and how we can get this city moving forward without going through what we went through in the last couple of months, because that was ugly. People talking about us on the news, they're writing about us in the newspapers. That's not who we are. So I'm going to ask that everybody can do that. Y'all put your heads together, put something together where we can have some kind of, you know, town hall meeting so people can understand truly how this government works, and you won't have all this mess going on, I think, if you do that. You got to start somewhere. And y'all haven't done that in my research in a long time, or if you've ever done it, but I think it's needed for this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Trish, six fifteen Oak Road. I actually wasn't going to say anything, but I completely agree with Remi. I spent some time this weekend at the Mardi Gras, Dylan Okies, and it was really interesting because this is something I've thought about in the past, is that we've got so many new members or people here on the island. And, you know, the main comment I heard when I was talking to people, just, you know, when they knew that I was running or going to potentially be a candidate for council, was that, oh, yeah, it's just wonderful and beautiful. They get caught up in that, and they forget what it takes that all of you guys do at this thankless job, civic club, everybody. Everybody forgets about that, and as I explained to them, I said, you know, I totally understand where you're coming from. You're new, and it is fun. It's a wonderful, beautiful place. But what I can assure you is that at some time in your tenure here in Clear Lake Shores, you are going to have an issue at some point that you will want addressed somewhere by the city. And you're going to want council members that are approachable or people that you can come to, that you are comfortable talking with, that can help you find a resolution that is in the best interest of the city. So it seems to me like we, you know, which is wonderful, we've got a lot of new people coming in, but they do, they get caught up in the beauty and the fun, and they don't really understand what's going on in the inner workings here. And I think that's a great idea, Remi, to have some, really to make it, I don't know, make it kind of fun, but really help them understand why it's important that they get up and speak, vote, whatever, as long, whatever side they're on, because they're going to need a good council that they're comfortable with. And so I think it'd be great just for, and even people that have been here for a long time, just even, I think a lot of us don't, even I really haven't until lately had a better understanding, so.
Great idea, Remi.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, item number ten is consent agenda. We'll be real quiet. Any items need to be pulled consisting of A through E from, by council? Having none, no objections to consent agenda. Having none consent agenda is accepted as written. Item number eleven, new business discussion and possible action may be taken on the following items. Item A is a resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash zero five, Galveston County mosquito control program. That is for the annual aerial spraying for over our area and for them to support our city with their spraying.
I'll make a motion that we pass resolution twenty-two-three dash oh five for the Galveston County mosquito control program.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Fisher, second by Ms. LaDay. Any discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion passes. Item number, or letter B, transfer of the sixtieth anniversary banners to this Clear Lake Shore Civic Club for fundraising. Exactly what it states, I put this on here. There's a lot of interest from the home folks and from inside Clear Lake Shores to purchase those. I don't know if they've come up with a decision what to sell them for yet. I think they're twenty or thirty dollars. But, to give those to the Civic Club for their fundraiser, and then there's another item coming up that I believe that they're going to be offering to procure new street banners.
All motion to transfer the sixtieth anniversary banners to the Civic Club for fundraising?
A second.
Motion by Mr. Scanlon, second by Ms. LaDay. Any further discussion?
I'm just curious, what, I'm just curious, what do, what do the banners normally cost to get one like that made?
So, they, the new ones that Teresa has put together that's in your packet, I think there's sixty banners, and I think there's only places for thirty?
Currently, there are fifty-three flying. If you replace the models that they all match, currently, you replace your sixtieth banner, I believe that's thirty-three to thirty-five.
Yeah, so I, I mean, right. So, the ones up, real high up in the air on Clear Lake Road, you know, in my preference, I was just going to leave those and then just replace the ones with the sixtieth anniversary. But, there's been discussion that they need to all match. So, so back to your cost.
No, I was just curious, what do they normally run for a banner, though?
It's twenty-eight ninety-nine.
So, about a thousand dollars. So, this was to get us kicked off and then work with the Civic Club, but it's a seasonal type thing that we're carrying on. City council and new mayor can carry that on forward if they'd like. So, any further discussion?
I think it's a great idea that there's some residual value that the Civic Association, Civic Club can benefit from.
No further discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Having none, motion passes. Item C is for Clear Lake Shore Civic Club to procure the new street banners, which consist of about sixty banners, and the city would install, remove the existing banners, install the new ones. If we, one thing just for council to consider is only replacing the lower ones, you don't have to rent one of those boom trucks, and that costs a thousand dollars. So, I would rather just stick to the lower ones, but that is to buy a Civic Club to buy new street banners, the city to maintain them.
I make a motion for the Clear Lake Shores Civic Club to procure new street banners.
Motion by Ms. LaDay, second by Mr. Cronister. Any discussion?
Where upper to lower?
Yeah, just leave it to the discretion of Brad.
I think there's the question of the difference in the funding for whether we go with all of them or just the half of them, because there was a couple hundred dollars difference, wasn't there?
Well, it'd be spares, so just keep them.
So, if I'm clear on everything right now, we're just talking about the lower ones, replacing them correct?
That's.
Or whatever the budget will support?
You got a, a lot of people have input that may persuade you to do all of them. But, I know EDC paid for the upper ones, yeah. Not to get down on the weeds here, I think there's something we can take offline to figure out and work. Their banners. Think anything that looks good, and I think since the sixtieth anniversary's been out on the main road, I think it's really good welcoming to the city and letting people know where you're at. Alright, any further discussion? Did we, did this one vote yet? Nope? Alright, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Having none, motion passes. Item D, resolution number twenty-two-three dash zero six, a resolution of city council of the city of Clear Lake Shores establishing the approved list of persons authorized to sign checks on behalf of the city of Clear Lake Shores. And I believe this adds Mr. Brad Gowdy to the check signing.
All approve. Motion to approve resolution twenty-two-three dash oh six as written.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Scanlon, second by Ms. LaDay. Discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. None, motion passes. Item E is resolution number twenty-two-three dash zero seven, a resolution of city council of the city of Clear Lake Shores, Texas regarding Limebarger, Gargan, Blair, and Sampson LLP as a being fully qualified as special counsel to perform all legal services necessary to collect unpaid fines, fees, court costs, forfeited bonds, and restitution as provided in Texas Code of Criminal Procedure, Article one zero three dot zero zero three one. And this is to continue their current contract. They would also collect our ad verum taxes, if that also was part of that. And it's a five-year contract, I believe.
I make a motion to accept resolution number twenty-two-three oh seven as written.
A second.
Motion by Ms. LaDay, second by Mr. Fisher. Any discussion? And they are here in the House, if you have any questions for them. Alright, having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Having none, motion passes. Item F is approved Limebarger, Gargan, Blair, and Sampson LLP contract for fines and fees collection services. And it's a complement of the prior item.
Make a motion to approve Limebarger, Gargan, Blair, and Sampson LLP contract for fines and fees collection services.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Cronister, second by Ms. LaDay. Any discussion?
I actually have maybe a question, since we're talking about them. This is, this is who would go and pursue someone who was not complying with like code enforcement and not paying their tickets, and that is, that is this, that is the role that they fill?
From our court, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And all of our backlog of fines, they have launched two campaigns in the history that I know of, and they just recently did one about three months ago that brings in some of the fines that have been passed through. Any further discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
And any opposed? Nay. Having none, motion passes. And item twelve is adjournment, and I'll be real quiet, not to wake up baby.